This meeting of the Gadsden City Council, I come to order the Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed? We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'd like to ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just thank you for life, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, thank you for this great city, and God, as we again give memorance to those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, God, so that we can enjoy this freedom. Pray that you'll be with their families as they continue to hold on to their memories of their loved ones who have died in battle. God, I just pray for wisdom and knowledge today for these men as they make these important decisions that will affect our entire community. We'll give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on May the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the weeks of May the tenth through the sixteenth and May the seventeenth through the twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor?
Yes.
A special recognition expected today will be presented at a later date. Number nine is unfinished business, we now have none today. Ten is, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to. Are in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance in old property located at fourteen seventeen Eastview Avenue in District One. Elizabeth Schillinger, also known as Betty R. Schillinger, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in February of two thousand and twelve. There have been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
Is the nuisance the building or the grounds around it? What is the nuisance?
It's all the house.
Is it inside? I'm like, Bill, this question about the house looks good. I don't know. First time I've seen it.
It's partially burned.
Oh, okay. We can't see the burned part. The house looks okay in the photo.
That's probably going to be one he'll evaluate, I guess, if it's not burned too bad.
Wish pleasure, the Council.
Brian, is this, is this house habitable? Can it be?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Did you say inhabitable?
Habitable. Can it be rehabilitated?
Oh, yeah, it could be rehabbed.
Can, will we look at that? Okay. Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution of assessing nuisance abatement leaning against property located at three twenty Springdale Road in District Two, the state of Alabama, and Kim F. Parker being the last known owners. Is, this is for demolition, which has already been performed, and the amount is three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Brian, in this Springdale Road, is that off Peyton Road?
No, it's in District One.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
We've got it.
You got it? Take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Crested Moon Entertainment for Super Funk Fantasy to perform for the Summer Concert Series July the fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E to perform environmental and geotechnical services.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this, this is related to a hundred and thirty-five acre tract at the northeast corner of Steel Station Road and Airport Road. This is the city's, this is the city moving in the direction of preparing and prepping land for industrial development in the future. So, in order for us to remain competitive for industrial, relative to industrial recruitment, we've got to have somewhere for companies to locate, so this is us creating, creating that space for them to locate.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Where are you? You ready?
I was late with the department heads report. Thank you, Council, I appreciate you letting me come. You know, we have a lot of things going on downtown. We have First Friday, we have Third Thursday, and we're starting back with our musical Mondays with DJ Buster. I think Buster needs to be up here really telling about this, but he's, he's always there, he's always there. But we're going to do, you're looking for a jazzy lunchtime. Buster plays some great jazz music at the Water Wall. It amazes me still that when I say the Water Wall, people don't know what I'm talking about. It's a great feature between the Pittman Theater and the Senior Activities Center. So, this summer, we're going to start with Jazzy June, and Buster's going to be there, he's going to be playing his jazz every Monday in June, weather permitting, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. So I hope you can bring your lunch, come out, and just kick back and relax. If you're, if you're working, get away from the office and just enjoy some great music and some, bring your friends and have some good fellowship, and Buster will provide some great, great music. So, that's going to start Monday, June the third, so be there. Then, of course, the next weekend will be First Friday, so, you know, we just got all kind of things happening. But Buster, I want to get you a crowd out there. We've got umbrellas, we've got trees, we've got tables, we've got chairs. So y'all come on out and just enjoy, I'm going to be looking for y'all too.
We, the only thing we're missing, of course, is food, and I've been talking to Buster about that.
Yes.
Thank you, Buster. Thank you very much.
He's got, he's got a good idea, don't worry.
Well, thanks a lot, Buster.
But we look forward to seeing everybody out there. The Water Wall, the Water Wall is a great feature, and so many people can walk up and down, or they drive up and down, and they don't get, they don't, if you're not walking, you don't notice it, but it's a great feature, and, and so y'all come on out and enjoy that. So thank you very much.
You're good.
Any other, y'all have any questions?
I think if the people knew what, they paid for that Water Wall, they would certainly come and look at it.
Well, maybe they will. Maybe they will.
Yeah.
Department reports committed, is any other? Okay, Bill, you want to start today?
I don't have anything really, other than a lot of exciting things are happening this summer in Gadsden, so everyone get out and enjoy all of it. The amphitheater program that we just talked about is going to be great, First Friday, River Fest, a lot of activities. Just come out and enjoy.
A lot of things happening up on the mountain. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a number of issues I want to talk about, but I think I'm just going to limit it to possibly one, because this, I'll save them for some other time, some of these other issues and some of the other comments. But, it's my understanding, I did catch the last part of a TV show this past Thursday, where the city of Gadsden was highlighted on thirty-three forty. I do know that we had paid for some advertising. I wasn't aware that we were going to be that hour. I'm not sure why it wasn't communicated to all the council members. I know most of us was out of town at our state meeting, but I was made aware of it by a number of my constituents who called me during that time. As a matter of fact, I was in the shower, and my phone kept ringing, kept ringing, it kept ringing, I thought it was an emergency or something, so I finally just had to get out the shower to, to answer. And they asked me, was I looking at TV? And of course I wasn't, because I was in the shower. But they wanted me to...
You don't have a TV in your shed?
Not yet, but I think I'm going to put one in there now because of this last incident. But anyway, the, when I turned on thirty-three forty, I caught the last, maybe ten minutes or so of the program being broadcast from Nakalula Falls. It's my understanding that there were no African-Americans on there, period, other than the co-hosts. And, of course, I immediately called the mayor's office, and the mayor was out. But I did get Shane, and I kind of chewed on him a little bit. I have a serious concern and a problem with what happened, but I have a better understanding as to what happened. And I understand that Mr. Shane is going to take the blame for this, I'm going to throw him under the bus. When I talked with the mayor, the mayor was unaware of what was going on, of what had happened. And when I looked at some of the people who were on the air, I immediately knew that the mayor didn't have anything to do with it, and I won't go into any details on that. But, we can't let things like this happen. I mean, we've got to consciously look at making sure that we be diverse in what we do, particularly when we spend city dollars. There were no minority businesses whatsoever highlighted, there were no minority people highlighted, and, and that I can't understand, particularly if you're going to go downtown and you're going to be shooting footage, and I know y'all didn't, Shane, you didn't have anything to do with that, but when they go downtown and shoot, and shoot footage, there ought to be one black person downtown somewhere. If not, they ought to call somebody, because we have a lot of black people in this city. But, in talking to the people, not only local, but I talked to some people in Birmingham and, and asked them about, and they had seen the show, they were wondering where were the minorities in this, in this community. Shane, you want to talk about this? Because I don't want to get too much on it, because I understand you the guy who's buck stopped at your desk, because, I know you're the lucky fellow.
Just to recount a little bit of the, the history, ABC thirty-three forty came, I guess it's been two months ago, and talked to a lot of folks around Gadsden, me from the mayor's office, some of the local merchants, some of the other organizations, tourism, I think they contacted DGI. We ended up bringing you all an agreement to, to considering, you all approved an agreement that included several things, commercials with the mayor highlighting some of the things going on, and Gadsden, James Span doing the forecast from Gadsden, which we had planned for First Friday, because we get such a good turnout for downtown Gadsden, and of course it rained, so we had to reschedule that, and we ended up doing Third Thursday, which brought a little attention to the, to the Water Wall. And then the, one of the bigger items was the, the nine o'clock broadcast, the Top of Alabama Live, which we gave them, them being ABC thirty-three forty, several options as to where we thought would be good to shoot from, and they picked Nakalula Falls. Well, our goal was to talk about tourism, try to get more people to the, the city of Gadsden, and so we picked our tourism director, and Kay was on there to represent all the downtown merchants. But, we, there was some information that we didn't have, and that was the sale of spots to other merchants. We did not, I did not know that that was occurring. We thought that we had the full hour to promote Gadsden, and it ended up not being that when we got there the day of the, the shoot. There was about, I guess half was the city of Gadsden from Imagination Place, like I said, tourism, the mayor, the falls manager, since we were at the falls, so those were the, those agency heads, there was a reason for doing that. But then there was no diversity in the, in the merchants, and part of that is, we didn't know that there would be any merchants on there. So, it was a little bit of a, well, it was a surprise to us, and then I saw Janice there, and I thought, well, good, there's somebody that's, that's going to be on that's, that's bought a spot from ABC, and, and then she was gone when I turned around, so I thought, well, that's obviously not the case. We did not give them names to go out and contact merchants to, that might buy ads. They just showed up, basically, I think the mayor, when we got there, said, what are these folks doing here? And I was, like I said, I was taken aback as well. So anyway, long story short, I contacted ABC thirty-three forty's assistant manager and told him, you know, that we are a diverse community, and what they did didn't show that at all. And, and of course, they want to do business with us again, and they don't want to represent us in a negative light. So he, he said, well, you know, whatever we need to do to make it right, we'll do. That was certainly not our intention. And I said, well, intention or not, this is the, the problem that you've caused for us. So he's agreed to do several things. Our, our time was supposed to end, because it was a focus on Gadsden for the month of May, and they've offered to extend that in order to, to be more inclusive and, and cover some more things for us. So, we hope that that's been rectified, even though it was a little bit of just lack of knowledge. Had we known that we didn't have the whole hour, we could have said, okay, well, you're going to need to do this, this, and this. But when we show up the day of the shoot, it was a different animal than what we thought we had purchased.
The problem, Shane, and, and I've done some research since then, I understand that there was a representative from thirty-three forty here in town selling ads. I don't know if any of the minority businesses were contacted, and I found out that the person who was doing the selling was a minority person.
She was a minority. That's kind of what, what shocked me, so I don't know, but...
You don't think all the merchants had the same opportunity to buy ads in them?
I can't speak for...
Well, they would have, if they had been contacted, but that's the point, Bill, that they were not contacted.
Yeah, I don't know how they selected who they even contacted in order to offer the package to.
And that's why I've got a lot of the merchants here, because they were never contacted to buy ads, and then when I looked into it, I found out that the person who was selling the ads was a minority. So why did, you know...
And I'll have to say, during the, well, two things. This was a rush job, because our original intent, when they, when they contacted us, was to, to use June as the city of Gadsden's month, but then by the time they came back to us, June was sold, July was sold, August was sold, May was available. Okay, well, we can highlight River Fest, we can highlight First Friday. A lot of things still going on in May. So what normally takes them a month to put together, we did in a matter of, of days. And so, you know, when you rush, you tend to, to make those kind of, kind of mistakes.
So you're saying that now we're going to have another shot at it?
They are. They were going to give us some, some more airtime to show...
Let me, at that point right there, today Courtney, our Assistant Parks and Rec Director, is only twelve today, probably, while we're here right now.
It's either today or tomorrow. I just got an email that is a little conflicting.
That was, plan, he was going to do that.
Well, I know, I heard that.
And also, I had told him personally, myself, when they said about some scenic things, they're going to do a special on the Carver Museum and what we're going to be doing over there.
Okay.
You know, so, we didn't know they were selling ads.
From my perspective, looking at ABC thirty-three forty, they had, and I don't, Hugh can vouch for this, and I think Kerry Payne as well, they had about four to six different people covering the area, so there was a lot of confusion. I saw that from outside looking at ABC thirty-three forty. So I don't, I don't know what went on there as far as their selling ads. Some folks would be contacted by multiple agents of ABC. So that was a little bit of a, seemed like a problem on their part.
I just know it created a stir, and we had a lot of our local minority business on us here today as a result of that, and, you know, in the future, whenever we do stuff like this, Mayor and, and council members, we need to make sure that they be inclusive, otherwise we won't be doing business with them anymore, so...
I think they understand that at this, at this point. We've had a good conversation.
I'm sure they do. I know we did.
And if we know that they're doing additional selling, then we can, we can direct them, because we have a database of our downtown merchants. We can tell them, go see these folks, they're good corporate, or, uh, city, you know, DGI members, and they'll participate.
I'm, I'm still trying to talk to the sales lady as to where she got her leads from. I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I'm going to be in Birmingham tomorrow and the next day, so hopefully I'll have a chance to talk to her to find out exactly where she got her leads from, because I was shocked and surprised when I found out there was a black person selling ads and no black businesses were contacted.
Well, I was shocked that they were selling ads, so that's...
Yeah. All right. I'm bringing my comments.
Shane, I want to, I mean, I want to commend Shane for, for standing up and giving a very, very clear description of the, the chain of events and what happened. I mean, I think, I think everybody in the room now has a better understanding of how all that happened and how it took place. And I, again, I just want to echo some sentiment that I've issued in the past. I think in, in terms of inclusiveness, you have to be, whether you're a private entity or public entity, you've got to be very deliberate about that, because otherwise it's not going to happen on its own.
That's obvious.
So, so it sounds, so it sounds like we've got some opportunity to, to build in some steps as it relates to whether we're talking about another group driving their activities that involve the city, or whether we're talking about our own. Now, you know, there are a number of, of instances where we've been very deliberate in terms of being diverse, but there, there's still some opportunities. So, so again, I, you know, that's kind of my, my two cents as it relates to this issue, but thank you, Shane, for, for clarifying.
I know there's nobody here from the chamber.
Well, I'll, I'll also issue my, give you my two cents worth also. Thank you, Shane, for stepping up and giving us a, an explanation as to how such a thing could have happened last week. Counsel not being aware of the timing of these events, anything else, was really where everything kind of started. I know we were in Montgomery most of the weekend, and perhaps we may have missed some communications, but it seems like that, that information about the timing of those thirty-three forty being here could have been given to us in some form of communication. We missed it. I, I appreciate the fact that you're going to make sure that this issue is, is corrected, because it sounds like there's a, of grave communication mistake here, because if I'm hearing that a, if, if I'm hearing that a minority lady was the one here soliciting ads, and she did not go to any of the minority business, and I have a problem with that more so than I have with anything else.
Well, you need to find out where she got her leads.
So, 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 I don't, so I'm not interested in where she got her leads from.
I am.
That, that's beside the point.
No, it's not.
That's all done. I'm interested in what she's going to do to correct it next time she comes around. That's what I want to see, where she's going, when she comes again. And, and that will be my solution to that problem. And I thank the merchants for being in, the downtown merchants, thank you all for showing up here, because you show that you're concerned about what's happening in your city, and being excluded in your city is not part of what you want to be a part of. So thank you all for coming, and thank you, Shane, for correcting, for, for explaining to us. Now we can, you know, we can't, we can't digest it, but at least it's more palatable on the tongue, you know, that, that what has happened. Thank you.
There's obviously no intent to slight anybody, not on the part of the city or anybody in this council. It, it's a shame that it happened the way it did, but there was certainly no intent there.
Like I said, I'm, I'm through with my comments today for this issue, but there's still some other issues with the downtown merchants that we need to discuss, and I don't want to confuse all of it and put it all on the table on one day, let everybody digest this, but I will be back with some other issues.
Yeah, well, that, you know, diversity isn't going away, y'all might as well, you might as well face the fact. Diversity, being a diverse city, isn't going away.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say that, I know they shot a lot of stuff, and I watched part of it on TV. I like Mayor, when they come back and Shane, when they'll come back, you know, the Water Wall, that's, that's an interesting place. I go every time there on Thursdays, probably. But also too, you know, in Alabama City, we got the gazebo the third Saturday, it don't get publicized like it does, Andy does what he can in the paper, you know. We have two or three hundred people on that third Saturday coming out there listening to music. It's all free, the food's free, the water's free, don't have to bring anything but a lawn chair, that's it. I'd like to see something like that put on there, you know, third, that's a beautiful place over there, you sell the flyers. We spend a lot of money over there, and, I mean, a lot of people have weddings over there, and just a number of things. I'd like to see that maybe put on there for Alabama City, you know. Also like to remind everybody, remind everybody that June the fifteenth, we have an holiday singing on Wall Street in Alabama City at the gazebo. We'll have a farmer's market down there, we'll have Trade Day down there, we'll have a hidden treasure down there, so just stay tuned, and you'll find out more about it probably after next council meeting. Mayor of thirty-three forty's coming back to towns, or what they're going to do? Thought we might can get some of this other stuff put on there too?
We might can. Let me know when you're going to be doing something.
Okay, well, the fifteenth, we're going to have a big thing down there, the fifteenth, you know, if you want to put that on there.
They'll be back for it.
Or come down there and shoot the gazebo or something, you know, it's something to put.
They'll get Brian Cox.
Because that's a, that's one of the oldest, you know, parts of the city right there, Alabama City.
I know, I'm from there.
I'm just going to remind you. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just a couple of items. Did want to let everyone know that on last week, the, the joint resolution at the state level designating, or confirming the designation as Highway four, four thirty-one, or Meagan Boulevard extending from the city limits of Atallah through Glencoe was, was actually passed on last week, as I've been informed. So, that's exciting news for us, because it allows us to proceed with the signage and ceremony and, and other things that we're looking to do as it relates to that. So, stay tuned for more information as it relates to upcoming events in the summer where we'll be acknowledging that, that designation. So, I do want to thank those, again, thank this council for being first to present the resolution, and, and I do want to thank the, our state rep, our state local elected delegation for, or our state legislative delegation for, for passing that for. So we do, we are appreciative of that, of that as a city. The last thing I want to touch on is, and it's something that I don't necessarily take any pride in having to bring up, but, you know, I think, I think everybody knows that there are a number of things that this council's passionate about, and, and young people, youth is, is something that this council historically has been passionate about. And we get a number of calls from a number of groups relative to contributions for a number of youth activities. One of the things that's, that's bubbled up, and I'm very disappointed that, that we've got some, that, that we've got some youth groups, some youth sports teams, that are, that are not being appropriate in terms of how they're managing their, their requests. Pretty much as a, as a, as a, as a matter of law, we can only contribute to the leagues. We've had a number of youth teams who've approached us, and they've been frustrated by that, but I think it needs to be understood, and Lee, you correct me if I'm wrong, but as a, as a council, we only have the ability to contribute. We have to meet the Public Benefit Clause for any discretionary monies that are contributed. So we can only contribute to the youth leagues, not any individual teams. And what we've been put in a position to, to have to defend is there's a rift between a number of league presidents and league teams, and so the teams are coming to us as opposed to the leagues, in, in an effort to circumvent their presidents, the presidents that they're at, at odds with. Folks, that's not our issue. That's not our issue. Folks, that's not our issue, that's not our issue. We're going to continue to, until the money runs out, we're going to continue to contribute to those, to those leagues, because legally, that's what we can do. And I want people to understand that, when you, as an individual team representative, come to us, and we have to tell you, go to your league president, have the league president submit something to us in terms of a written request. So, I don't want you to think that that's one council member doing it different than another one, that's how we all have to function. Those are the rules that we all have to function under. And if I've said something wrong at this point, I please want somebody to correct me. But, but that's how it's supposed to work, and so the individual teams who have issues with their, their presidents, that's something that you're going to have to work out within your leagues. But, we can only respond to requests issued to us by the leagues, the nonprofit groups that are the, the youth leagues, whether it be football, basketball, baseball, or whatever.
Man?
Yeah. This morning, we have a special visitor with us, and we'd like to welcome Latarence Bush. Where is Latarence Bush? Where is that man? There you are. I believe his granddaddy had a little lot to do with that, maybe. Am I in the park with him? Okay. Man comes every week, so he's starting this gentleman off right, I think. I want to thank everybody for coming yesterday, and Billy, I know you might have something to say about this too, at the memorial, yesterday at the park. Was that not rousing, or was that not rousing? I'm going to tell you what, Mayor, I almost started amen in there at first, and he tapered off, but we're talking about freedom, we're talking about people who died to preserve our freedoms, and Buddy, he put it across, so...
Yes.
If you didn't enjoy it this year, come back, and we'll have it again next year. And we're thinking about bringing Command Master Sergeant Caddy back one more time. He's really sharp. And I appreciate everybody's backing on that too, I really do.
David?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Also, well, I'll just continue to reiterate, well, not reiterate, but to tell you that yesterday's service, the memorial service that was held at the park yesterday at Nakalula Falls, the Gadsden Award Patriots Association, it was a moving experience. You know, if you're a veteran, you know, and when you hear taps, you know, you know what that means. You know, when the National Anthem is sang, you know, an American, you know, you know you standing attention, you know, and you salute. When, when, you know, when those things happen, and when we, when we think about those men and women who have died in services for us to be here today, to enjoy the privileges of freedom, then it's a, it's a moving, it's a moving event. Command Master Sergeant Caddy was very, very good in his, in his, in his, in his speech yesterday. We enjoyed it all, but, you know, like I said two weeks ago, if you come for nothing else but to hear Amazing Grace played on the bagpipes, you know, you would have gotten a thrill out of that. And then, of course, the release of The Doves, you know, it was just a beautiful program in order for us not to forget those persons who have died, or those persons who have been severely wounded for our freedom. And I thank the Gadsden Award Patriots Association for this, for that event yesterday, and we look forward to having more. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, yes, I forgot to mention the fact that the American Legion Carver Post did have a program on Sunday for Memorial Day honoring veterans, so, and it was a great program, so, just want to get that in too, we had a couple of programs going on this weekend.
Mayor?
First of all, that speaker, you could tell he was the real deal Command Master Sergeant I can tell you. He didn't need that mic, did he? No, he didn't. I hadn't heard a speech like that since I left Fort Polk, thank goodness. But, he was really good, he was a true American, I'm telling you, the guy did a great job. You know, we've been talking about grass cutting, and there's all these things, it's about $100,000, I think, for this year, if we cut the grass and farmed it out. So, a lot of pushback, we couldn't do it in-house, and, but we've done sort of the unbelievable, I guess, we did it in-house, we hadn't got it all, we keep fighting it, but in about six or seven days, I believe we cut 376 lots with our people in-house, instead of paying somebody to cut them. And we'll continue to work on it. If you live next door to a vacant lot that you see us cut, if you'll call Community Development, and I think it's on TV, assign with a number, and you're interested in it, we've got three different sets of lots. We've got lots that we own with a clear title, we've got lots that we got liens on, and then we've got state lots that we have to cut, which is not good. But, we're working on several issues, but we're going to continue to cut them in-house. The people we got out of two departments that cut them, they're back cutting what they normally cut today, and in a few days, we'll start back on another section. But I think we work mainly in Oak Park, green pastures, and, you know what the other one was, Shane?
Tuscaloosa?
Tuscaloosa? Yeah, some of that did. Okay, I think, I think that's the main three areas. But out of about 600 lots, we cut over 50% of them in about five or six days. So, it could be done, and we're going to keep doing it. Thank you.
Mayor, I must say, I, I'm pleased with what I've seen with the lot cutting to this point, because as I ride around through the neighborhood and through, through the city, I see more lots that have been cut than, than ever have in the past at this time of year. So, thank you for, for that program. We've just proved that you can do it better in-house, and you can contract them.
Here, I want to make an announcement, due to the Memorial Day holiday, Monday's garbage route will be collected today, Tuesday's route will be collected Wednesday, Thursday and Friday's routes will be picked up as scheduled. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Aye.